Welcome to the 14th Meeting of City Council, and I would call on Councillor Van Mirbergen to provide the land acknowledgement, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Ashinabek, Hodenoshone, Lenape'wak, and Atawandran peoples. We honour and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all the treaties that are specific to this area: the Two-Roe Wampum Belt Treaty of the Hodenoshone Confederacy, the Silver Covenant Chain, the Beaver Hunting Grounds of the Hodenoshone-Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1786, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Ashinabek and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Ashinabek and Hodenoshone. The three indigenous nations that are neighbours to London are the Chipewa of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Munsee Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures, and customs.
Thank you, councillor. Colleagues, we are grateful to Corey Crossman for arranging at every council meeting a person who will lead us in the singing of O Canada. Today, we are delighted that Jason Mercer is joining us. Jason has played and performed music as a singer-songwriter for over a decade with the London-based artist's latest release, Nobody But You, set to hit streaming platforms Friday, October 30. It feels like we're a bit of a showman for Mr Mercer. Drawing inspiration from the harmony-rich sound of the Eagles and the storytelling lyricism of Tom Petty, Jason holds himself to a high standard, creating music with meaning in songs that continue to mirror everything from memories to feelings, conversations to personal life experiences. We'll ask Jason to come forward at this time to lead us in the singing of O Canada. I would invite you all to stand, please. (Singing) O Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free, from far and wide. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. So I used to sing like that, like never, and that was a tremendous rendition of O Canada, and I thanked Jason very much for his contribution. Colleagues, for the benefit of our audience viewing today, we invite you to please check the city's website for additional meeting details. Meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city's website. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request, and to make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. Colleagues, I'm going to look for any disclosures of minor interest. I'm going to apologise. I normally say screens on for the benefit of all who are in the hinterland and not in council chambers, so could I ask you, please, colleagues, screens on, as I know the clerk will want to confirm quorum.
I can confirm quorum, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, and as is our tradition, if people aren't at chambers, we like to let all colleagues be aware of that. Do we have anyone who has not been able to join us for attendance tonight, clerk?
Through the chair, we've not been notified of anybody who will not be in attendance.
Thanks very much. We have one recognition I will call on. Councillor Hamou, please.
Thank you. This weekend, London hosted Folk Music Ontario over the weekend, sorry, that's twice, with 600-plus delegates plus over 150 additional artist performances and 30 panel discussions. We want to thank Folk Music Ontario for the great weekend we had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hamou. I'm not aware of any confidential matters to be considered in public, and for the benefit of our viewing public, we are about to go into closed session, and I will ask the clerk in just a moment to advise the reasons for which we will be doing so, but on that basis, I'll be looking for a mover and a second to go into closed session. Moved by Councillor Hillier, seconded by Councillor Hopkins. Thank you very much. Can you advise us, clerk, the reasons that we are going into confidential session?
Yes, Your Worship. There are eight matters total indicated on the public agenda. One matter relating to litigation currently before the Superior Court of Justice, litigation and solicitor-client privilege. Another solicitor-client privileged matter related to 2010 Dundas Street East, and there are six matters related to identifiable individuals with respect to the 2023 Mayor's New Year's Honours list.
Thank you for that. With that, I will call the vote.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Thanks very much. We are going to be dealing with those matters in closed session and then returning back into public session thereafter, so your screen will be like the Twilight Zone for just a little bit of time. Thank you. Please be seated. I feel a bit like Judge Judy when I do this, you know, it just feels a little strange. Welcome back to the public session, and what I will look for is a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held on September 27, 2022. For that, I'll look for a mover, Councillor Fife Miller, seconded by, I'm sorry, Councillor Helmer, did you second? Thank you very much. Any discussion? See none? We will call the question, but not by a show of hands.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you very much. Five items under communications and petitions, and in a moment, I'll look for them all to be moved into their appropriate committees. 6.1 deals with an adult live entertainment parlor at 2010 Dundas Street, deletion of location. The second is a zoning amendment to permit a pilot of temporary mobile shelters. The third is a rethink zoning information report update and sample place-type zones. The fourth is a zoning bylaw amendment dealing with seasonal outdoor patios. And the fifth deals with 1156 Dundas Street, and I'll look for a motion to refer them to the above appropriate committee reports. Councillor Hillier, seconded by Councillor Van Mirbergen, thank you very much. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you. There are which notice has been given, which moves us into our committee reports, and the first is the 13th Report of Civic Works. I'll call on Councillor Pelosi, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have been given no notice to pull anything separate.
Thanks very much. Does anyone wish to have any items within Civic Works voted on separately? Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you. I'll put the entirety of all items of the 13th Report of Civic Works Committee on the floor. Highlights from this round include 2.3, the Short Term Contract Amendment for Environment Depots' Operation and Management Programme at both the Clark Road and Oxford locations. This was to add more staff on temporarily until it comes back in the next budget cycle. For this, we'll have an increase in health and safety of the workers, and in addition to servicing the public quicker as they come through that due to higher rate of recycling at the depots, which is wonderful. The dedicated locator model agreement is in response to Bill 93 that we must comply with, and I would just also note that 2.2 is accommodated within the capital budget for the Greenway wastewater treatment repair at the plant. And 4.1 was the Integrated Transport Advisory Committee asking for staff to come out and consult more with them on the master mobility plan, which they are more than happy to do as it's still open for public comment as well.
Thanks very much. Do colleagues have any comments or questions with regard to any items on the 13th Report of Civic Works? I see none, so with that, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you. Councillor Pelosi?
Thank you. That concludes the 13th Report of the Civic Works Committee.
Thanks very much. Now, for the 11th Report of Community Protective Services, I'll call on Councillor Cassidy, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. To pull items, let's see, 3, 4, and, sorry, I'm on the wrong report, 5, 6, and 7 on the council agenda, which are 3.1, 5.1, and 5.2 on the committee report.
So noted, thanks very much. Does anyone wish to have any other items voted on separately? Back to you, Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you. So I will put the entire report on the floor except for 5, 6, and 7.
Comments or questions from colleagues? Councillor Van Holst on 1 through 4. Counselor Van Holst on 1 through 4.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a question through you to our staff relating to the demolitions. I do want to thank committee for supporting one on Hamilton Road. There's a building that's become quite problematic and its removal will be helpful. I would note that there are a number of other buildings along that aged corridor that people are concerned about. For instance, like KFC there that I don't think will return to its glory days. But my question to you is, what's the process that gets counsel and our staff from the recognition of such a building through to a demolition, just so that people understand it?
Why don't we try Mr. Maythers for some response?
Through Your Worship. So firstly, the city has a vacant building bylaw, and that sets up the regulation of vacant buildings. The city maintains a vacant building list based, which is a requirement of this bylaw. And we work with putting items on that list with fire prevention. The buildings are identified by complaint for the most part, but we also have an act of enforcement that's supported by the fire department. Buildings are then, once they're on the list, these buildings, the owner will receive a notice. That notice will ask for contact information, insurance, and a floor plan. If they don't submit this information, then we go through the administrative monetary penalty process. And if property standards violations continue without any action, then staff report to council. We'll be providing that request in the mission.
Answer your question, Counselor Van Holst.
Yes, very succinctly. I appreciate it. My thanks to our staff for that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from colleagues? I see none. With that, we will call the question on items 1 through 4.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Thanks very much, Counselor Cassidy.
Worship, that brings us to item 5, which is the adult live entertainment parlor. And it was a three-part recommendation from committee that civic administration be directed to provide the CAPS committee with future status update reports with respect to license applications for these locations, that the report be received, and that communications be received. We did have two presenters from London Abused Women's Centre also give some information to count to committee at that time.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions? Counselor Lewis, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Colleagues, I'll be as brief as I can here. I'm going to encourage you, because this is a recommendation from committee at council, I'm going to encourage you to defeat this so an alternate recommendation can be put on the floor. And I'm going to share with colleagues that and the recommendation would be similar to what Counselor Hamu moved at committee, but did not have a second or four at that point in time, which would be to delete the zoning location, but not the license at this time. And I'm going to share with colleagues that since the Community Protective Services meeting, I've gone out to the site of this former adult entertainment parlor. The owner has made significant investments in his property to clean up what had a reputation of being a rundown, not great-place motel into something that has now met the requirements to get a franchisee agreement in place with Travelodge. They've completely renovated their kitchen and restaurant facility. And they're in the process of renovating what used to be the adult entertainment portion of the property into a banquet hall. They put quite a deal of work and time and financial investment into this property. The owner was really clear with me. He has no intention of having an adult entertainment parlor reopen on site. He's trying to make this a family-friendly destination at an affordable rate for people who are visiting our city, whether they're here for a hockey tournament or a baseball tournament, or they're here visiting family. That's the market that he's trying to move this location into. I want to underline for colleagues that if we decide to remove the location from the zoning bylaw, that no way requires us deleting a license at this time. We do realize that there was an application to move the license to a location downtown on Dundas Place. Council said no to that. But the license is still in its appeal period, so they could still bring forward an appeal on that. But I think it's important for colleagues to recognize this license expired 10 months ago. The license holder has not sought to renew it. It expired in January of 2022 and has not been renewed. So we have an expired license that was seeking a move, and we can't actually move. They had to apply for a zoning for a new location. But they wanted to have that license hopefully transferred to another location. Both the license holder and the owner of the property know that this location in Dundas Street East is not going to operate as an adult entertainment parlor again. So I would encourage colleagues to defeat this. And if that's done, then I will put forward the alternate recommendation that at this time leaves three licenses, but only leaves two zoning approved areas for these at this time. Should the owner wish to seek an alternate location for that third license, they will have to bring that forward through a planning application as appropriate.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there comments or questions? Counselor Helmer, go ahead, please.
I want to make sure I understand what Counselor Lewis is proposing, because he was talking about locations for these adult entertainment parlors. And a couple of times, he referred to the zoning bylaw. And I guess my question through you two city staff is, these locations you're talking about, they're set out in the business licensing bylaw, right? Not the zoning bylaw?
Let's ask Mr. Maythers.
Through Your Worship, that is correct. They are highlighted in the business licensing bylaw.
Okay, so my question, I think, for Counselor Lewis, because he's talking about a future motion that he wants to put on the floor, is the intention of that motion is to delete the location from the schedule in the business licensing bylaw. I just want to clarify that that's what you're intending to put on the floor now, not something about the zoning bylaw?
Let's ask Counselor Lewis his intent.
Thank you. And yes, thank you, Counselor Helmer. I did misspeak when I said the zoning bylaw. I should have said the business licensing bylaw. But yes, that is exactly my intention.
Thank you. Counselor Helmer.
Okay. Having clarified that, I certainly appreciate where the counselor is coming from. And I think it's difficult, given the related matters that are underway to act at this time. And I understand why he wants to move ahead right now. I think the wisest course of action is to wait. And if we're going to remove a location from the business licensing bylaw, that we do it at a future point in time. Not to say that, you know, one way or the other, whether this should be a location. It seems like, given the circumstances on the ground, that the current owner of this property doesn't want it to be an adult entertainment parlor. So I think we're not really in a situation where waiting is going to be hugely problematic. And I think it would be helpful overall. So I'm not going to support this alternative approach at this point, given when the council term ends. I guess I might not be around to support it at any point. But I'm happy to pass the recommendation that's on the floor from committee right now. I think that's the most prudent thing to do, given the circumstances.
Thank you. Counselor Turner.
I thank you, Your Worship. Counselor Helmer addressed the points I was going to raise.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from colleagues? I see none. We have a, oh, pardon me, Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, Your Worship. And perhaps through you two, the counselor, in his discussions with the property owner, did they have a timeline for when they thought their renovations would be finished? And we would see what actually, what became of the property?
I'll have the counselor respond to that, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. In brief, the response to that is no. As the counselor may imagine, both in the private sector as well as what we've experienced in the public sector, supply chains are a little less than reliable right now, as is some of the scheduled contract labor. So they're already actually a little bit behind where they would like to be. I can't speak to when they can have that finished.
Anything else, Counselor Van Holst?
I don't think, Your Worship. I might have been helpful to have a communication from the owners to this regard. But I don't have a further question.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions from colleagues? I see none. With that, there's a three-part motion on the floor. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 9 to 6.
Thanks very much. Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you. Brings us to the deferred matters list. And there is a conflict on the first item of the deferred matters list. And generally, what we've been doing is calling that separately so the member with the conflict can vote separately.
So we know that we can do that. I think you're looking then for a motion to receive deferred item matter number one on the deferred matters list. I'll follow your format from your committee, if that's all right?
Thank you, Your Worship, yes.
Thanks very much. Clerk, you have a comment. You have many often, but what's your comment now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do note that there was a conflict declared at the committee meeting, but there has not been one declared this evening, so.
Well, then, I will look to see if any counselor would like to declare a conflict on any items in the deferred matters list. I see Counselor Hillier.
Yes, I need to declare a conflict on 5.1, the deferred matters list, number one, as my family puts on events in the park. But Ms. Cassidy picked it up before me. Thank you.
So noted. I may well have presumed that because that when you're omniscient as a chair, you get to figure these things through. But thank you for declaring the conflict. Therefore, I'll look to you, Counselor Cassidy, that we receive item number one on the deferred matters list to be received. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Thanks very much. With that, we will, oh, I beg your pardon. Any comments or questions? It's been moved by the Chair of the Committee. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0 with one recused.
Thanks very much. Counselor Cassidy.
I will now move the remaining items on the deferred matters list.
Any comments or questions with respect to the balance of the deferred items? Seeing none, we will call the question.
Counselor Lewis?
I'm not sure if that has gone in. I've submitted three times, but.
We'll take it for.
I will vote yea.
Thank you.
Closing the vote, motion carries 15 to 0.
Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Your Worship. The final item is number seven or 5.2 from the committee report. It was a submission from Counselor Van Holst, and the committee received that submission. I'll put that on the floor.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions? I see Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I appreciate the discussion at committee. And it really revolved around the possibility of a broader motion. So I have two things here in my most recent commission, communication is, and they involve the temporary mobile shelters, which you've seen the community has produced. Two years ago, we had the option of doing a pilot on this. Staff's suggestion was that we didn't need to because we were moving forward with a housing-first model. However, who would have known that two years later, there just simply isn't housing to put such people with needs in? So these temporary mobile shelters are, again, a possibility. And I think something that we need to address to allow for the zoning for that. So of the two motions, the second, the most broader here in B, is that staff be directed to initiate a review of the zoning bylaw to consider temporary mobile shelters at places of worship. So we know that there's a number of such places that would be interesting in helping a small number of people. And this review might help us figure out how to make such assistance compliant with our bylaws. The second one is the more site-specific motion. We know that Arcade Mission, as you can see in the photo provided with my email communication, they have some of these shelters ready to house someone. And however, they want to make sure that they were allowed to do so. And this particular motion would do a couple of things. One is begin the process of a city-led zoning amendment to allow a pilot for a couple winters to see how these can best work for the community. And the other part of it, staff tells me, is that should we begin this, then they would not go with enforcement on them if the review that's taking place decides against them. So there will be, for sure, an opportunity for that group to house some people. And even more importantly, work out the bugs, if you will, of how to make those work. And of course, the last thing I want to point out is that these kinds of shelters are things that can be easily used by other communities. And I specifically referenced those communities that are sending people to London because they think we have the resources to assist them. And of course, we know that that's not the case because of the many, many people that are sleeping in the rough. So if I may, first, I would like to just put on the floor number B, that as a motion, that staff be directed to initiate a review of the zoning bylaw to consider temporary mobile shelters at places of worship. And I would look for a seconder for that motion.
Well, let's see if there is one. Is there a seconder for B? Counselor Pelosi is your seconder. Any comments or questions beyond what has been discussed thus far? Counselor Turner, go ahead, please.
Just to make a quick point, Your Worship, through you. I've heard this narrative a couple of times, that other municipalities are sending their underhoused and homeless individuals to London to access services. That's not been substantiated anywhere. It's a rumor. It's unethical for municipality to do so. We would not do that. Other municipalities would not do that. It seems to pervade when we have these discussions about those who are underhoused and homeless. And I don't think it does much service to us as a municipality in our discussions about how we provide services and compassion for those who are experiencing those challenges, whether from our region or from others. And so I just wanted to address that. I keep hearing it. It needs to be addressed on the floor of council here.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Counselor, I know Counselor Cassidy, but as the Chair, I might kind of let her be a little later. But Counselor Cassidy, you're there now. Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just a question to staff. I know there's been a lot of discussion around the zoning bylaw and as it pertains to the activities at a place of worship. I know places of worship have quite a bit of leeway on what they define as worship. But I would really like to hear from staff if such a review is already underway. And just general commentary on if council were to take this, make this decision and direct staff in this manner. Number one, is it necessary? Is the review already taking place? Number two, will it impinge on things that are already taking place at the civic administration level?
Let's ask Mr. Maythers.
Through Your Worship, I'll just speak to a couple items there. So firstly, we are currently aware of the proposal at 696 Dundas. So when we're looking at that site, we're still in the. So when we're looking at that site, we're still in the, in the preliminary stages of confirming whether that property meets the zoning bylaw for what the use that's being suggested. So we have not made a decision on that property at this time, but we're also including an analysis, looking at what other municipalities are doing and how, if they have any kind of pilots like this, how they're addressing it from a zoning perspective. So firstly, for the, for the single property, we haven't made a decision on that property at this point. As far as moving forward, looking at this in the future, I would, I would probably suggest that the best way to do that would be to align with the new, the new process we're looking at for the rethink zoning, which is the creation of a new zoning bylaw for the City of London. So we are currently engaging with the community on that. There's opportunities to be able to get involved. So that's probably the most likely place that we would suggest looking at the fact, that this specific matter in the future and with respect for a zoning bylaw.
Thank you very much. Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you. That's it for me with questions.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions with respect to Part B, the motion on the floor, the amendment? Counselor Pelosi, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. As we've all been doing lots of engagements with residents, grateful for the compassion that they're showing to our unhoused neighbors. And as we know, it is Canadian winters, and winter is perpetually always coming upon us. Wondering through you to staff, what are winter response with the city? What's it looking like in regards to mobile housing? And realizing we do have community partners willing to step and lend a hand of, willing to explore this and see what might be coming, realizing that the rethink zoning is wonderful work in an overhaul, but it's likely not going to be having an impact we want it to in the near term.
Mr. Mather.
To Your Worship, I'm going to pass this question to Mr. Dickens.
For wisdom, Mr. Dickens, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I can speak to the winter response planning that's currently underway. The community continues to finalize a community-led response. We, as the municipality, have been working to support those efforts and then support the planning of the whole of community. So we are targeting a very early November deadline or timetable for the community to finalize and submit the budgets and the planning for the winter response. The community continues to meet and, and work on those specific details. The work is progressing quite nicely, and it looks like this year's winter response truly will be community-led. Some of those details are still not finalized, and I wouldn't be able to speak tonight in terms of the amount or the presence of this particular type of indoor sheltering response, but there is a large whole of community response in terms of what this looks like.
Thank you. Counselor Pelosi?
Thank you, Mr. Dickens, for that information, realizing we're seeing temperatures drop at night and our neighbors needing housing now. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? Oh, Counselor Helmer, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I like where Counselor Van Holst is going with this part of his motion and communication, and my only concern is that it be directed to the right place. I'm glad that counselors have already asked questions that kind of brought, brought up the same thing I wanted to talk about, which is should we be referring it into the rethink zoning process? And my, my only hesitation with the language that Counselor Van Holst has brought forward is that it's narrowly focused on places of worship. And, you know, on the one hand, he's talking about a site-specific thing, which we can get to when we get to that part, I guess, if we're going to talk about a particular motion he has on that front. But that's not a place of worship, right? And then we're talking about, well, what about all these places of worship? But I actually think there's potentially many locations where a small number of temporary mobile shelters could work well, and that all those locations should be considered as part of the rethink zoning process, not just places of worship, but, but other areas that might work. As we saw, you know, we've run a pretty good winter response in a number of locations, including an area that's owned for a golf course, an area that's owned for a hospital. You know, there's very various different places where we've had pretty effective responses. So I don't want to narrow it down to just places of worship. So I'm supportive of looking at places of worship. I think, and my, my preference would be to refer both of these communications, the communication that came into the committee, and then this one to council, to the rethink zoning process, rather than create a separate stream that's just focused on places of worship. So I'm going to move that referral, which essentially would be for both of these issues, to refer them to the rethink London process and see if there's a secondar for that. Essentially, I think, accomplishes the same sort of thing, except that they're tied on the same timeline in terms of the places of worship part, and it would, it would potentially deal with more than just places of worship. You know, I think it doesn't close the door to looking at other locations as well.
Well, then let's see if you have a secondar for the referral. Counselor Lewis, thank you very much. Comments or questions on the referral? Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I, I appreciate the support of council and the suggestion as well. My question through you to staff then is one of the timing. So we were told that it would be about ninety days to, to do the work for a, a single site at 696 Dundas, slightly longer for this review to take place, I was told. And, but how, how long will it take to come to a conclusion with the, with the rethink zoning in, in terms of these two items?
I think Mr. Mather should be the right one to respond to that, please.
Through Your Worship, the rethink zoning process, we are currently engaging in the consultation, as you can see on the, from the PEC agenda. So the schedule for completion currently for the rethink zoning process is the end of 2023. So this, it would, we'd likely see a first draft in the, in the second quarter of 2023, but that would be the soonest that you would see something coming forward that would address any of these kind of analysis.
Counselor Van Holst.
Okay, so, yes, thank you. So I think it's a, a good place to discuss this. However, we see that passing our motion today would, would allow, certainly in A, would allow Arcade Mission to use some empty temporary shelters to house people for this winter, but as it stands with the rethink process, it might be, it might be two winters or into two winters before someone is able to, to use them. So I, I would prefer that we defeat that and, and allow this, allow this to take place. And certainly, there is a pilot. I think they're going to do some important work that's, that's outside of just opening the shelters, but it's, it's figuring out what kind of agreements they need with people, how to create a small community of, of individuals in these types of units, what other supports are needed around them. So I think it's very valuable work that could be done here. And, and again, the, looking at the zoning for places of worship, that was, that was an obvious one. I realize there may be others. However, at, when the work is done, we could certainly extend that in, in the bylaw and, and look at it. But I would ask through you to staff, how much longer than the, the ninety days do we think we could complete a review of this particular zoning bylaw to, for the temporary mobile shelters at places of worship?
Counselor Lewis? I will, but I, you're on the speaker's list. Thanks very much. Mr. Mather, go ahead, please.
Through Your Worship, so the ninety, ninety-day value is also, that's likely to be like a, a minimum for a site like this. If you're looking at a more extensive zoning amendment, then you may be pushing up to like the five months, five to six months period.
Anything else? Counselor Van Holst on the.
Okay, and, and that was, my question was for, for B, that if we looked at a review of the zoning bylaw to prevent temporary mobile shelters at places of worship, you said that would, in, in our conversations, I was under the impression it would take somewhat longer than ninety days, but is that, is that the?
Sorry, yeah, that's, that's the five to six months.
That's the five to six months. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mather.
Okay. Well, thank you. So, Your Worship, although I appreciate if my colleagues want to refer this to the broader process, I do see some urgency, and, and therefore I'll probably vote against the referral myself.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis, please.
Thank you, Worship. So I appreciate Counselor Helmer putting this referral on the floor and happy to second it. I think the rethink zoning process is exactly where this needs to go. I think it's important when we, when we reference a specific type of, of zoning, like places of worship, that we recognize that places of worship aren't all created equal either. There are places of worship in, in every neighborhood across this city, and they are not all the same sort of physical plant and setup. There are other requirements beyond being a place of worship that I could foresee being necessary for this type of zoning amendment to move forward. So I, I think it really needs to go into the more comprehensive review and, and being mindful of the fact as well that that rethink zoning process is still open for public input and participation as well. And if we're talking about a change like this, I, I think that the public needs a chance to weigh in as well, because again, as I said, there's places of worship in every neighborhood in the city, and what that impact looks like can differ from neighborhood to neighborhood, depending on the, the neighborhood layout. I mean, we see places of worship in the downtown, which are often much more closely, in close proximity to one another, whereas out in the neighborhoods, they may be spaced further apart. The impacts can be different there. So I think that this referral is the best path for us to pursue at this time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? I see none. On the referral, we'll call the question.
Motion carries twelve to three.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is my report.
Thank you very much. Now for the eleventh report of the Community, excuse me, Corporate Services, I'll call on Counselor Lewis, please.
Thank you, Worship. I have not been made aware of any items that anyone wishes to pull, so if we want to canvas the room to see if anyone wants anything pulled, otherwise we'll put the whole report on the floor.
Well, let's do just that then. Does anyone wish to have any of these items voted on separately? I see none. Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Worship. These were unanimous decisions at committee, so I'll put the whole report on the floor.
Any comments or questions? I see none. We'll call the vote.
Counselor Van Holst. Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thank you.
That concludes the report from Corporate Services Committee, Your Worship.
Thanks very much. Now for the sixteenth report of Planning, Environment, I'll call on Counselor Hopkins, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would like to put the sixteenth report of the Planning and Environment Committee report on the floor. I have not heard from anyone wishing to have any items polled. So with that, I will put all items on the floor.
Does anyone wish to have any of these items voted on separately? Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, if I may, we've had two Planning Committee meetings since the last time council met, and we received a number of consent items. We had four public participation meetings. I do want to bring everyone's attention to the items for direction, so we just had a conversation about the rethink process. So we did receive the report and really appreciated council's support in the item that we referred from CAPS over to the rethink process. It is something that we need to get going as soon as possible. So I was really pleased that we were able to receive the report. We also had another item for direction, which was 4.2, and this was the zoning bylaw amendment for seasonal outdoor patios. And we had a good discussion for those who need a refresher. This was referred back to staff, and it came back to planning with a number of suggestions that were made, removing references to specific months of operation and aligning the eight-month regulations based on the Liquor License and Control Act was one suggestion. Adding the capacity limits based on the Liquor License and Control Act, as well as adding restrictions to seasonal outdoor patios to protect accessibility parking spaces. Those were the suggestions. I do want to also let council know, Counsel Turner made a motion moving forward with the revised bylaw that staff be, report back at a future meeting with respect to the capacity limits and to explore any opportunities to update the limits as they relate to Section 4.18, and that's the section that we are changing here at council. So with that, I'll put all items on the floor.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Colleagues, I see none. We will call the question on the sixteenth report of Planning, Environment.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Still standing, why don't we get you to report on the seventeenth Planning, Environment Committee meeting, please?
I will. I'd like to put on the floor the seventeenth report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I have been asked to pull three, which is 3.2, 4452 Wellington Road South. And are there any other items?
Well, let's ask that question. Does anyone wish to have any other item voted on separately?
Oh, and I'm sorry, of course, the two amendments that we have for number six, which is 3.5, and number five, which is 3.4.
So we're dealing with item three and item six, which are 3.2 and 3.5 on your schedules. Thank you very much. Anyone else wished to have anything voted on separately? So with the exception of those two items, any comments then on items one through six exclusive of 3.2 and 3.5? And I'm advised by the clerk, just so that I'm paying attention, that 3.4, which is 366 Hell Street, also has an amendment to it. So then that means, colleagues, we are dealing with items one, two, and four. Any questions on those? Seeing none, we'll call the question on those.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Hopkins.
I'd like to put three, which is 3.2, 4452 Wellington Road South, on the floor. And this was pulled by the Council of the Ward, Counselor Hillier. This is a rezoning application going to a light industrial place type as well as a industrial holding provision for light industrial as well. And with that, I'll put that on the floor.
Thanks very much. Any comments or questions? Recognize Counselor Hillier.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank my colleagues for listening to this tonight. 4452 Wellington Road South, they're looking at putting a trucking firm in there, and this refers to how the neighborhood was notified. Only 150 meters. Well, the only people that were notified for this was another trucking firm. The residents were not notified, but they were notified about the golf course, driving range, which is three times farther away. Now, if you know this area, the corner of Castleton and Dingman, the traffic, the hydro pole there has been taken out four times in the last year alone, and we want to put a trucking center right there on the corner. We also have a road that doesn't have curbs, doesn't have gutters, doesn't have sidewalks, and families that walk along it. If you have two trucks driving down this road, you cannot walk down that road. You have to get into the ditch or in someone's driveway. And I'm very concerned about this because the neighborhood was not let, was not told in a way that, unless they had walked up the construction sign and read it, they would have never have seen it, because they were not notified. So, I'm asking for a referral for one cycle so that a public participation meeting can be called, so the neighborhood can be involved in this.
You've asked for a referral which takes precedence. Is there a second for the referral? I see Counselor Lehman. Thank you very much. Comments or questions on the referral? Counselor Pelosi, go ahead, please.
Thank you to the board counselor for pulling this one, realizing that us in the south end, a lot of our areas are rural, and we don't have the sidewalk infrastructure, but we still have residences living out there who are seeing a greater movement out that way of trucking firms coming out to the south end, which is understandable because there's the highway, but there isn't the sidewalks, the street lighting, the roads have soft shoulders. My only question through you to the counselor was, just he's requesting a referral back for one cycle, which I'm fine to support, for residents can be notified, just making sure he's specific in what kind of notifications, because if they give out notifications of 150 meters again, the residents still won't get them.
I think it's a fair question, and I'm going to do a little chairman's privilege having been participating in the meeting. We did hear from staff about how they had advised various individuals, so I think the question is a fair question about specific, specifically what you're looking for. Counselor Hillier, please.
Yes, just because of the way the notification is given, the residences in the area were not properly, well, it's notified according to our standards, but it's not proper for what we're trying to put into the area, because Dingman Drive has not been upgraded for trucks. We don't even have a traffic light at Highbury and Dingman Drive. How does a truck turn left from there? If you go there right now, they can be backed up four and five trucks deep. So, what I'm asking for is another public participation meeting, and I myself will knock on every door in that neighborhood to get them there, so we can actually have a conversation about the safety issues in this area that continue to keep being forgotten. So, that's what I'm asking for.
Back to you, Counselor Pelosi.
I appreciate that, realizing that the, the residents are far apart in regards to some of these applications we have coming in, and that when the city does follow the prescribed manner absolutely to the letter of the law, that they don't necessarily get the information that would be helpful to them. And then when the planning application notices go up, sometimes it does end up being in a farmer's field, that you need to traverse the ditch in order to get there or get your binoculars because you simply can't see it. So, I appreciate this information coming forward, realizing it's just transparency to all, and realizing that residents who do also name those areas a residential neighborhood where they've decided to raise their families, and they would like an opportunity to fully participate.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. I'm just going to reiterate what I said at committee, and it's no disrespect to the counselor. I appreciate that he feels that there needs to be better notification, but we have met our statutory duty on this application. And when we start to make exception for one, then we open up the door to making exception for all. And these notifications go out with, over the course of a year, all of the applications that go combined come with a considerable cost for those to be mailed out, costs borne by the taxpayer. So, when we start making new rules for different applications, I get very concerned about both the fairness, as well as the financial impact of changing the rules on the fly. So, I won't support this. There was a public participation meeting at the Planning and Environment Committee, and that has met our statutory obligation on this matter.
Thank you. I'll recognize Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, worship. I'm inclined to support this, certainly for the purposes of transparency, which is something we're obliged to do as a council, but also because it's, we may need to review our process. So, there's a difference between rural and urban environments, and so I can see how we might need to go further than that, that specified distance in order to give people that are impacted very closely by the intersection. So, so it may be much farther than a distance that, but this still may be the closest intersection of concern to a number of residents that would like to have had the opportunity to speak. And I think if we provide this opportunity, we'll also get a chance to see how many people did come and, and share their views. So, I'll, I'll support it.
Thanks very much. Other comments or questions? Counselor Ann Meyer-Bergen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll support this referral motion by Counselor Hillier. He is the Ward Counselor. He understands the unique situation going on in this particular area. So, I would suggest that we all support this. Thank you.
Thanks. Other comments or questions? Counselor Turner, go ahead, please.
Thank you, worship. I'm not inclined to support the referral. Counselor Lewis articulated the reasons quite well here. The statutory notification distance is something that we've investigated a few times, and it's, it is a challenging one. And there was, when we last embarked on this, we actually made a number of changes to our notification process, which included a fairly significant increase in, in the amount of signage, showing what the, the design charrette was going to be on there, trying to make it as conspicuous as possible, because we recognized that not everybody within the notification radius may be interested in, in the rezoning of a property, and that there may be people outside of the notification radius who might be interested in that rezoning as well. The public participation meeting was advertised. It was, it was placed through all the appropriate channels. It is more difficult, and I recognize that in rural properties, because of the distances between, between properties. Ultimately, that, that's something that, that if we are concerned about that, we should be taking that up with the province and looking for changes within the Municipal Act and the Planning Act. Because that notification, the challenge is, once we go beyond what's statutorily required of us, it creates an onus on us in all future circumstances if we're not really careful with that. And that's hard to be able to, let's say, in a rural area, that we, we create a notification radius that's two or three kilometers, apply that same standard into urban area, and the number of residences in notification locations is exponentially higher and incredibly costly. The, the challenges that we, that we see as well is, in, in the urban areas, is the differences between renters and homeowners, between property owners. We don't have a mechanism right now to notify renters or non-property owners who might be residing within the notification area as well. Those are challenges that I think we continue to want to be able to address. But to be able to reboot public participation meetings every time that, that a neighborhood might not feel that they, they receive proper notification, I think we're going to find that every time. There are going to be residents within the notification area and outside of the notification area that don't feel that they got the notice that they needed. I think we can do a lot to continue to try and improve the process, but on a specific, on specific files as they come up for us to reboot it each time, I, I don't think that's appropriate. I am sympathetic to the concerns of the neighborhood. I am sympathetic to the concerns of the counselor, but in this circumstance, I think process is really important so that we don't find ourselves caught in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions with respect to the referral? Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship. And I didn't support it at committee, and I won't be supporting it here at council. I appreciate the work the counselor is doing here, representing his community. One of the reasons I agree with Counselor Lewis, Counselor Turner, for me, it sets a very dangerous precedent. I have many, many applications in Ward Nine, and I constantly hear I didn't get the notice, even though I was really close to that 120-meter radius. There are opportunities to get on the notification list. Anyone can get on the notification list. I do have a quick question through you, your worship, to staff about the signage. If I can ask staff, when, when did this notice, the signage go up on the property?
Let's take this back to staff and get some clarity around the timing, please. Go ahead, Mr. Mather.
Your worship, Kevin Edwards is here to be able to provide any technical background on this issue.
Well, then let's go there. Mr. Edwards, please.
Through your worship. So, I don't have the exact date in front of me, but typically it's right when the application is submitted following that.
Counselor Hopkins.
So, was it, generally speaking, around what time then?
I'd have to go back and look at the, when the application was submitted.
Counselor Hopkins.
Okay, I understand it was submitted a number of months ago, but if, if you could get that confirmation, I know we had that discussion at planning, but I don't want to just assume any date either. Again, I didn't support it at committee. I, I think maybe, I remember a number of years ago, we had the conversation about the radius, and maybe there is an opportunity in the future to, to have a look at how we send out notifications to the public. I know there's challenges in the rural areas, but I think there's also challenges in the urban areas, especially when it comes to tenants notice, being notified and not having those opportunities. So, I won't be supporting another public petition, petition, participation meeting. It does set a very dangerous precedent for me in particular, representing a ward that's all about development. I'll have someone asking me in the next application, they didn't get the notice, and here we go. We're setting ourselves up for a challenge, even though I appreciate the, the work that you're doing within the community.
Thank you. Counselor Hammer. Counselor Helmer.
Sorry, I thought you were referring to a different counselor. I have questioned through the mayor if you, Counselor Hillier, I want to make sure I understand, and I regret that I wasn't actually at the Planning Committee meeting to hear the discussion there. So, if you're repeating yourself, I'm sorry for that. The specific neighborhoods that you're interested in, in getting the notices sent to and sort of hitting the reset button on the PPM, are these like the, the houses to the east, sort of on the other side of the creek, and then the sort of the smaller development, there's a small subdivision sort of to the south, again, on the other side of the creek, around the intersection of Westminster and Wellington? Are those the areas that you're interested in getting notices out to? They look like they're around a kilometer away or something like that. Is that, is that the right neighborhood, those two neighborhoods?
Counselor Hillier.
Actually, we're talking about Broccoli Shaver, which is right there on Dingman Drive, approximately 180 meters. It starts from where this development is going in, and it's all the residents that live along that stretch. My biggest issue is how we notify, we're comparing urban to rural, and how we're doing 150 meters for notification. And I think we need to rework those, because rural areas need to be a larger notification. I know Counselor Hopkins also has a lot of rural, and it's causing a problem for them as well. So, I would like this to come back for one cycle, because if nothing else, it shows us the reasoning that we need to open this back up and have a discussion for rural areas, so have them included in the conversation. Because if you're having 150 meters in a rural area, that's one person's property. So.
Counselor Hammer.
Thank you. So, I do think we're getting at a, an issue in the way that we're providing notice, and, you know, I think we have to be sensitive to, there's different built form in different parts of the city, and different kinds of neighborhoods, and different kinds of developments that happen in those neighborhoods. And so, and we don't necessarily hear about some of this stuff actually as a problem, because when subdivisions, for example, and they come forward for approval, often many years in advance of when they're going to be developed, you know, at the time that those things come forward, it's a whole bunch of agricultural land and very few residents within 120 meters. And so, when, you know, the proposals come forward, send around the notice, and not many people see it. The people who do are probably farming or they own farmland, and there's not a lot of discussion then. And then later, when, you know, it actually comes around to implementation, people, we've actually had this happen in other areas of Counselor Hillier's Ward, they come forward and say, what's going on here? Like, what do you mean you're doing this? We didn't know about that. And, you know, I, I do think it's partly a function of just the rural areas, especially the ones that are under pressure to transform into non-agricultural uses. That's where you're seeing probably the most friction, and also where you'd have, you know, the notification, if you apply the 120-meter radius, really not reaching that many people. So, I mean, on this specific application, I'm not totally convinced we need to reset the clock, but I think the broader issue about, you know, should we have another look at how we're doing the notifications? I think we made a lot of improvements, like those signs that are up there now are much, much better than they used to be, and at least you get a sense that something is happening and you could inquire further. But, you know, the signs that you can walk up to and read are not as easy to read when you're driving past them. There's no sidewalk in front of them. You can't just walk up to them. And I think Counselor Hillier and Counselor Pelosi are both pointing out, as counselors who represent areas where they have this rural-to-urban transition happening in their wards, that there's some friction there. So, I think that broader issue, we should, we should deal with that. And so, on this one, I'm not sure I'm going to support the referral for a full cycle. The planning issues, to me, seem pretty straightforward. But I'm not totally made on my mind on that. I'm open, you know, listen a little bit more, and maybe a referral would make sense in this case.
Any other comments or questions? I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to take, take the chair, please.
Thank you. I'll go to the mayor.
Colleagues, I typically tend to support the direction of staff on things like this as it relates to PPMs, but in this case here, I'm going to support Counselor Hillier, and here's why. We just heard Counselor Hammer talking about resetting the clock or not. Well, guess what? We're daylight savings time is, is done, so maybe sometimes it's time to reset the clock. And the notion of looking at that rural-urban difference, and the same rules that apply to one thing don't necessarily apply to the other. And, and I'm exceptionally mindful of the challenge. I mean, we heard at the Planning and Environment Committee meeting, the, the challenges that, that, that residents felt by not being included. And isn't that our job? Isn't that our job to listen if they don't feel that they've been duly consulted? And I'm respectful of precedent, and I'm mindful of the hard work that staff have done. But in this case here, to the extent that it opens up the larger conversation of how we deal with notifications, perhaps within our rural areas, for all the reasons, it makes some sense. So, Counselor Hillier, I'm happy to support your referral. We'll see where this goes as we, as we move along into the balance of this meeting. Thank you, deputy mayor.
Thank you. I'll return the chair to the mayor.
Thanks. Any other final comments? On the question of the referral, I will call the question.
Closing the vote. Motion carries eight to seven.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins.
Yes, your worship. I'd like to put number five, which is 366 Hill Street. We do have an amendment. It's a clear, it's a administrative amendment on the floor.
Thanks very much. Do you have a second for the amendment? I see Counselor Fife Miller. Thank you very much. Comments or questions? I see none. We will call the question.
I see none. We will call the question.
Counselor Hamu, Counselor Van Merbergen. Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thanks very much. Are we, are you moving the, the motion as amended?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Do you have a seconder for that? Counselor Cassidy, thanks very much. Comments or questions? Then let's call that question, please, as amended.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Counselor Hopkins.
Yes, the last item is number six, which is 1156 Thunder Street. It is a, an amendment as well. And just for councils, if no one checked in on the planning committee meeting, we, we had quite a public participation. This is the lands that are associated with the former McCormick factory. And in particular, the concerns from the community were around the height and also the parkland dedication. But we did have a conversation around putting the building that's situated on Block Three. What is allowed is four to six with bonusing. It was, the recommendation coming from staff was to refuse that. Counselor Helmer attended the committee meeting and made a motion bringing forward going to a five-story. It, it was debated and it was supported. So the amendment is coming forward. There was quite a bit of work that needed to be done to change the recommendation. And if I can just take counsel through some of the, the changes there, we, we don't need two bylaws now. We just need that one bylaw. And if you look at B, the difference to the recommendation that was passed at committee is that we are adding to that B clause, the, it being noted that this rezoning will permit a maximum height of 18 meters and a maximum density of 150 units per hectare on the Block Three of the proposal draft plan of subdivision. In other words, we're not using five stories. That's what we were discussing at committee. We are using the 18 meters. And again, the other amendment that we're making to this is that we are changing Clause D, again, referring to this being just one bylaw. And we are using E as the old F. And so with that, that's the amendment that is coming forward with the recommendation to approve this application.
Thank you. Do you have a seconder for that amendment? I see Counselor Cassidy. Thank you very much. Comments or questions? Counselor Helmer, go ahead.
Thank you. I hope colleagues will support the recommendation from committee. I really appreciated committee hearing me out there about why a five stories or 18 meters made more sense on Block Three. Colleagues who've been on council for two terms will remember dealing with a lot of the zoning for this property back in 2017. And I think it came up in the, in the public participation meeting that, you know, some of the residents who live in the area, they're understandably frustrated that the redevelopment of the site has taken so long. The applicant who has done a lot of work to clean it up was stuck with some delays at the provincial level for quite some time and is quite eager to be moving ahead with redeveloping the factory into residential, providing a new long-term care facility and apartments for seniors and some townhouses along the north edge. And at the time the zoning came forward, as we pre-zoned all these lands when we sold lands to Sierra, just after that, we did the rezoning. And at that time, I would say there was a lot of agreement. Not everyone was totally happy, but there was a lot of agreement. And today, we're at a point where there's some frustration, and I think people are pretty close to being unhappy with the overall thing. So you heard the residents come forward and express some frustration, and not so much about the height going up to five, but the townhomes instead of single detached houses along the northern edge of the site. It's the difference between 11 units and eight units, which was initially planned. The applicant, on the other hand, is, you know, not happy about a couple of things. They want to go to six stories on the one block instead of five. And they don't want to provide this pathway system unless it's going to be counted as parkland dedication. And the problem there is that the pathway is undersized. You know, the standard for pathway to be accepted as parkland is 15 meters, and that points their corridor that they're suggesting should be accepted as parkland is only nine meters wide. So it's too small, and so it's not being accepted as parkland. And that's becoming an issue that I really am hopeful will not delay the whole redevelopment. And, you know, if we go ahead with the zoning amendments that Planning Committee has recommended, I think overall, it's the right thing to do for the site. The parkland dedication issue is being treated the same as any subdivision would be treated. You know, you have to provide parkland that's the right size. And if you don't, it's not going to be accepted. If it's less than is required, you have to pay cash. And that, that's applied to every subdivision, including this one. And I think city staff are being very fair and following the policy framework for that. I really would like to see the site redeveloped as quickly as possible. There's quite a deadline that the long-term care proponent is facing in order to get in the ground and start building. And so we're really at the point where we need to go ahead and not have any more delays. That's why I didn't support trying to get to six stories on Block Three. Would have delayed things too much. Five stories, there's a good policy basis for that. And the London Plan, we don't have to wait even longer to have something happen. So this development's really important for the area. The proponent, the applicant, has done a lot of really good work to get to this, this point. I really hope that they go ahead. I know they're not totally happy with this parkland dedication issue, but I hope they go ahead and move on with the next phases and redevelopment because we need housing in this area, and we need it very soon. And, you know, we really can't have more delays on this front. So I hope colleagues will support the zoning changes.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions? I see Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. Just want to say I'm really supportive of this. As Counselor Helmer pointed out, this, this has been a long time coming. And I think, you know, the vision for this site is, is really phenomenal. And once it's built out, it will have such an impact in the area. And having said all that, I, you know, I put my hand up really fast, recognizing all the work that Counselor Helmer has done, not just at the last planning committee meeting, but even all throughout the last term of council. I'm happy to let Counselor Helmer be the second on this motion, if, if he wants that. And hopefully, it will just be a quick thing for the clerk to change my name to Counselor Helmers.
Thanks very much. Comments or other comments? Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I just want to add my thanks to the counselor. I know this is, this application has been a long time coming. I know the community isn't 100% concerned around, around that extra bit of height that's happening, like Counselor Helmer said, around the townhouses. But to me, this is a compromise that we can put in the five-story without having it referred back. It's site-specific. And with that, I just want to thank the counselor for the work that he's done.
Thanks very much. I have no one else on the speakers' list. Counselor Cassidy, were you asking a question?
Yeah.
Yes, your worship, you were consulting with the clerk, and I think you both missed my comments. I just offered to change my second and give it to Counselor Helmer so he could second the motion since he's the ward counselor and he's been very invested in this.
Well, I don't know how we do procedural things without the blessing of the chair, but apparently, you don't need me for that purpose. So it would appear that Counselor Helmer is the seconder on this. But not, not to be outdone, we have Counselor Van Holst. Do you want to weigh in on this as well, sir?
Not so much weigh in, your worship, but I did, did want to ask a question just through our staff for a little clarification about the, the idea of the parkland dedication, if they could provide a few more details. So in this instance, the nine-meter width pathway, I guess, is being, being proposed, whereas it would require another six meters to count as parkland dedication. And is there no? So I just want to find out, there's no prorated amount? It's just an either-or, you have to meet this, this standard in order to get it? Or otherwise, it counts for not?
Well, then, let's ask staff that question. Mr. Mather, I always go to you just because you're so friendly.
Your worship, Mr. Edwards will be here. He's actually prepared for this question. Thanks.
Mr. Edwards, second time tonight. That's a highlight. Where you go.
So through your worship, I guess there's really two elements to this. There is, there are, there is a parkland dedication piece, so there is a small park. It really comes down to these corridors. And A, the corridors aren't being dedicated to the city, so they are private. So it's going to be privately accessible, open space. So it's not really a dedication per se because it's going to be retained for, for private. I think the other piece, too, is that's exactly it. It's the, the standard typically is 15 meters because that allows us to build it and operate it over the long term. So that's really typically the minimum requirement. And I think the other piece, too, just to be aware of as well, is that this land is, as it's going to be retained for private, it's also, there's several zoning, zoning standards that are making use of this because it won't be dedicated. So, for example, it'll accommodate the required zoning for landscaped open space. You can also use the density as well. So I guess to, and it's, it's, it's under, it's undersized, A, but it's also going to be retained for private. Thus, it's not available as, as a dedication.
Thank you very much, counselor. Does that answer your question?
I think it does, your worship. I appreciate the response from staff.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? So colleagues, this is on the amendment that has been moved and seconded. Who called the question? Yes, apparently seconded twice. Who knew?
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thanks for, Counselor, you're looking to move this?
Yes.
Let's see if you have a seconder in Counselor Helmer. I'm not, I'm going to ignore Counselor Cassidy for this purpose. Counselor Helmer, are you good to second this amended motion? I don't normally do this, but just because it's us, you know. Why don't we look to see if Counselor Cassidy then would like to second? There we go. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions, colleagues? Let's call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thanks very much. Hopkins?
I'll turn over the last comment to you.
Thanks very much. Colleagues, in our last meeting, we had the opportunity to acknowledge Greg Barrett on his retirement. Now, he's not here to, to listen to all the nice things I'm about to say, but I would like to feel that in the last meeting where he, when he was present, colleagues and I joined in the spirit of appreciation for the great work that he has done over so many years with the City of London. And if there's the epitome of servant in the word civil servant and servant leadership, I would say it's Greg Barrett. He's been great. So by permitting me through the, with the permission of the committee chair to acknowledge Greg, even though for this very moment, he is now gone from the city, I just want to say on behalf of all council, thank you very much. You've been tremendous, and we appreciate your leadership, your opinions, probably a few more than my Cape Breton mother when it comes to planning. And I would tell you that you have really been a difference maker. So with that, we say sincere thanks from all of us at council. So with that, anything else for you, Counselor Hopkins?
That is my report.
Thank you very much. With that, let's go to the, let's go to the fourteenth report of District Priorities and Policy. Deputy Mayor, please.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm going to, there was only one matter on this report that had a divided vote, but both the mover and the seconder indicated that he needed pulled separately. So I'm going to attempt to put the whole, the whole package on the floor for, for the evening tonight.
Well, let's see if you can get away with that. And having said that, does anyone wish to have any item pulled to be voted separately? Looks good, Deputy Mayor. Go ahead.
I'm happy to move it, then.
Any comments or questions on any of the items in the SPPC report? See none? Let's call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Deputy Mayor?
That's it for us.
Much. We have the added reports, which is the thirteenth report of council in closed session. I'll call on Counselor Hamu, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to report out that progress was made on the six items listed on the agenda in closed session. Thank you.
I think we're just, I just conferred with the clerk. I believe there were eight items in closed session.
Okay, there were eight items listed on the agenda in closed session.
We should all be so agreeable. Thank you very much. Do you have a seconder for that? I see Counselor Hillier. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Let's call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
There are no deferred matters, but we do have an inquiry. I'll call on Counselor Van Merbergen, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure some of my colleagues have heard similar incidents is what I'm going to describe. But it certainly has come to my attention from sources that are very solid and reliable that organized groups of homeless are coming into London from other areas outside of London. And clearly, we are not able to handle our own situation here in our own community, let alone taken community homeless from other areas of the province and perhaps beyond. Again, this is from very reliable sources who know what's happening here in London on the streets. So I wanted to take this opportunity to use the inquiry to ask staff, perhaps starting with Mr. Dickens, in terms of their awareness of what is or perhaps is not happening on the streets right now.
Let's ask Mr. Dickens.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. There have been occurrences over the summer months and into the fall where we hear reports of individuals coming to London in groups or arriving on a bus, for example. But those occurrences are difficult to substantiate. Often, they're, they're rumblings or we encounter individuals who come to London days or weeks later as a, people are looking days or weeks later as a, people are looking to access services. We're not really getting a lot of information to substantiate that this is a coordinated effort from any one municipality. But in any occurrence where we have individuals looking to access services and they indicate they've come from another community, be it on their own or if they, if they indicate that they were sent here, we will often look to connect them back to their home community if there are supports. And we make it very clear that our system capacity in London has already reached its maximum capacity. And if there was any indications from another community that London had rooms or services, we make that known. It's not the case. I will add as a context piece, this topic is very popular at the provincial tables with other large urban municipalities and other regional municipalities as they see a lot of incoming individuals to their communities as well from neighboring municipalities and even other large urban centers. So if it is, you know, happening on a large scale in London, we're not seeing that in a way that we can substantiate it. But we do know that we do receive individuals from other communities, as does a lot of large urban centers as well.
Thank you. Counselor Van Merbergen?
Thank you. Like, as an example, apparently ten days ago or so, a bus came into London with twenty-three homeless from an area outside the city, all from the same area. If this is indeed the case, what can the city do to mitigate or control this situation? If indeed it starts to become very obvious that this is happening more and more coming into London, what, what can we do?
Mr. Dickens.
Thank you, worship and through you. Thank you for the follow-up question. As far as a mitigation strategy, we would be, and we continue to communicate to our municipal service manager partners that London is at its capacity when it comes to homeless prevention services, programs, shelter beds, any type of resting space rooms. If we get reports of people are coming here, we will reach out to our municipal partners as well of the originating community to let them know that we would be working with individuals to reconnect them back to their home communities. But again, we do see a lot of in and out flow as many large urban centers and regional municipalities do. But we are very clear when we work with our municipal service managers that we're not in a position to receive individuals because we do not have system capacity. And I think one of the challenges is that there's not many municipalities in Ontario that do have capacity.
Thanks very much, Mr. Dickens. Now we'll go on. If I may, there are, yeah, thank you, Counselor. There are no emergent motions, which moves us to bylaws. And colleagues, so we're going to be dealing with bills three, six, one through three eighty-two, but we will be omitting bills three sixty-seven and three seventy-eight as a result of the referral related to four, four, five, two Wellington Road South. So colleagues, just to be clear, we will be voting for bills three, six, one through three, two inclusive, not quite with the exception of three sixty-seven and three seventy-eight. And with that, I'll look for a mover and a second or, please. Moved by Counselor Hillier, seconded by Counselor Turner. Thanks very much. We'll call the question. Up, clerk, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. First of all, I would like to confirm the second or on that motion.
Counselor Turner.
Thank you. This also excludes bill number three, eight, two as that was associated with the amendment for the property on, at eleven fifty-six Dundas Street. So we have, we have removed one of the bylaws associated with that.
I hope that was clear to the mover and second or, and I did not reference it because the, the rest of the, the bills were so in numeric order that I didn't want to confuse the issue. But three eighty-two is also excluded. So with that, the mover, Counselor Hillier, you're good. Counselor Turner, you're good. All right, we are good and good. Let's call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
And colleagues, now I'll be looking for mover and second or of secondary bills one through three eighty-one, and we'll be excluding bills three sixty-seven, three seventy-eight and three eighty-two. With that, I'll look for a mover, please. Counselor Layman, seconded by Counselor Hamu. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's call the question.
Counselor Hopkins?
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thanks. Finally, I'll be looking for mover and second or of third reading, for third reading and enactment of bills three sixty-one through three eighty-one, excluding bills three sixty-seven and three seventy-eight and not including three eighty-two. Do I have a mover for that, please? Counselor Helmer, thank you very much. Seconded by Counselor Cassidy. Thanks very much. With that, we will call the question.
Counselor Hopkins?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries fifteen to zero.
Thanks. Before we look for a motion to adjourn today's meeting, a couple of acknowledgements if I can. Sometimes with staff, it's the big stuff that they do so well and sometimes it's the little things that are done so well. It may seem like a little thing, but it isn't. But every council meeting when we have a, someone who leads us in O. Canada, that's because Corey Crossman and his team make it work. And we're delighted for that support and that help as well. You heard Counselor Hummer earlier talk about Folk Music Ontario and the staff involvement that that took. A number of us were at the groundbreaking of Vision Soho, a number of counselors, but so were two of our deputy city managers, Kevin Dickens, who was fairly shy in that meeting, and Scott Maythers, who never is. But the beauty of that is that everyone was present and, and it's the most unique, the most dynamic, the most incredible project with mixed housing, affordable and supportive housing anywhere in the country. And as I said in my comments that day across North America, an unbelievable effort by all. And so I want to give a great shout out to the staff and also fellow colleagues around this table who supported the initiative relating to Vision Soho. Certainly, the council did get great acknowledgement at that particular session for what was done. Like to acknowledge not just the folks in Carling Heights, but the, but also the Carling Heights Optimist Community Centre and the staff who were associated with transforming Carling Heights back to a community center. I'm sure for the community, that's tremendous. But, you know, they served more than two years as an assessment center during COVID. And I know that the communities look forward, and I've talked to the counselor about this, about having their community center returned to them earlier this month and we are so delighted for them. But, you know, again, it takes a staff effort and it takes effort from the health unit and everyone else who's been involved. And finally, guess what, folks? We're four weeks away for the remainder of this council to survive. I know some of you will miss me, some may not, but I will miss all of you for the record. I want you to know. And we're not going to say our goodbyes tonight because we do have one more meeting. But what I will say is that for the work that the clerk's office has done, oh my gosh. It's been incredible what they have done in terms of, say, polling stations and, and the various sites where we have had our electoral stations for the advance polls. And we know that the work that's going to come up one week from today, which is my gentle reminder to all Londoners, let this be the first time that we break new records for municipal voting. Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that make an incredible statement? Don't vote for me. That's the other thing I would say. That would be a waste of your vote. Write-in ballots are appreciated but not necessary. Actually, please, that's kidding. And, and I just want to say thanks, clerks, all of you and all your staff. And Ms. Livingston, all the staff that have participated and will be in the election coming forward. What a great Team London effort. And I just want to say thank you to all of you. With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Van Merbergen. Great. Let's do a show of hands on this, can we? All those who want to leave, adjourn.
That motion's carried.
Thanks. Meeting adjourned.